All right, it is 6:00 PM and I will call this meeting of the Town of Lunenburg Committee of the Whole to order. Before we begin, I'd like to acknowledge that we're meeting in M'Ghaggy, the ancestral and unceded territory of the M'Ghag people. Now, I'd like to look to council for a motion or the committee for a motion to approve the agenda. Moved by councillor Sanford, seconded by councillor Bertles. Any additions or deletions to note? Seeing none, all those in favor? Posed, motion is carried. That takes us on to the approval of the meeting minutes for November 29th, 2022, moved by councillor Ernst, seconded by the deputy mayor. Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Posed, motion is carried. That takes us on to new business. The business for tonight is the operating budget and the water utility budget. So I will turn it over to staff to make their presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the public record, my name is Jamie Doyle. I'm the chief administrative officer. This evening, we're pleased to present to you the proposed 2023 and 2024 operating budget. However, before I turn it over to staff for the presentation, I want to take a brief moment to touch on a few aspects. As you'll hear, the proposed budget before you is in balance. The total revenue and expenditures is just over 9.9 million. Staffing being a notable increase, we've taken the liberty to better understand the trending. I'll take you back a decade. In 2013, the town had 34 employees, which equated to 16.28% of the 2013 budget at that time. Fast forward 10 years, and we now have 40 employees. With that, equates to 18.6% of the proposed operating budget. That's an increase of six employees over a decade. That, in my experience, is incredibly low. Those six employees are a culmination of resignations, backfilling, and new hires. There has been a consistent ebb and flow through the 10 years. One of the first undertakings as CIO was to complete a reorganization that was outlined by council and reflected in the community comprehensive plan. There was a commitment to build a more robust and well-rounded community development department that would see recreation, economic development, and planning under the same reporting structure to be named community development. One of the final steps in this exercise is to create a new refreshed organizational chart. That's being worked on as we speak. Community development is one of the high priority initiatives of council and the organization to steward and implement the CCP. This requires staffing expertise. We've added three employees in that group to ensure responsible, well-conceived planning processes, as well as there's an identified staffing gap within the recreational group to help facilitate the orderly function of our rec facilities where public safety is certainly paramount. Additionally, we've added a clerk position to overhaul our legislative functions, bylaws, and policies to ensure that the Town of Lunenburg is operating in its best practices within policy development. Across the board, I have, and I hope you all have, noticed a dramatic increase in output from the organization that ranged from core infrastructure rehabilitation work to RFPs and studies being to begin larger planning initiatives as outlined throughout the CCP. Mayor and members of council, what you'll see this evening is a budget that's in alignment and reflects the initiatives of the CCP that staff under the leadership of Kathleen Rafu, senior accountant. She's done a wonderful job of stewarding a fantastic budget free review this evening. And additionally, I'd also like to thank the entire team for their work over the past few weeks to bring this forward under a number of competing priorities. Their dedication to the process and the organization should certainly be commended. I'm incredibly proud of the work this team has accomplished in the 10 months that I've been working with them, although it seems like 10 years by now. And with Mr. Mayor and members of council, I'll hand it over to Kathleen and the team to walk you through the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening. Staff have prepared a presentation to take council members through the highlights of-
Sorry, Kathleen, can you just lean into your mic a little bit more so?
There we go. Staff have prepared a presentation to take council members through the highlights of the 2324 operating budget. So if you could advance the slide, please. The first slide that we're going to be looking at are assessment trends. PVSC value properties based on market value, which is the value a willing buyer would pay a willing seller on the open market. The market value for this year is based on the value of your property on January 1st, 2022, and on sales information from the 2021 calendar year. Residential and resource properties are eligible for CAP. So when you purchase your property, the first year, your assessment is based on market value. But each year following the purchase, if you meet the CAP criteria, your taxable assessment increases by the Nova Scotia Consumer Price Index in November of that year. This year, the increase on assessments was 7.7% if your property was in CAP. Next slide, please. This slide shows the actual market value of trends. The market residential assessment was 318 million in 2022 and 382 million in 2023. An increase of 64 million or 21% in the Town of Lunenburg. Commercial assessment was 46 million in 2022 and 56 million in 2023. An increase of 22%. Next slide, please. CAO Doyle mentioned the draft budget before council this evening is in balance. The total revenue and expenditures equal just over 9.9 million. Next slide, please. This chart shows the various revenue sources that fund the operational budget. The draft budget is funded with no increases in the residential tax rate or commercial tax rate. This draft reflects a sewer rate adjustment of 7.5%. Detransfer tax remains at the 1.5% with 1% will be used for future capital in the amount of 350,000. And a half of percent is used for operational revenue, and the estimate for that amount is 175,000. Recreation and other rates have also been increased by the 7.5 Nova Scotia CPI. Residential taxes fund 4.28 million or 43.4% of the budgeted revenue. Commercial taxes fund 1.85 million or 18.6% of the budgeted revenue. Sewer rates fund 1.64 million, which is 16.6% of the budgeted revenue and are directly applied to the costs of the operating the wastewater treatment and distribution system. And this includes debt payments and reserve transfers. As council have directed, we are budgeting an amount this year again of the 286,000 that will be transferred into the wastewater treatment plant funding that is coming in the very near future. Other municipal revenue includes fees for sale of services, parking meters, recreational services, and fund 1.74 million of the budgeted revenue, which is 17.6%. Provincial and federal grants equal 379,000 and are equal to 3.8% of the revenue. Next slide, please. This pie chart is a quick summary to show council the percentage of the budget related to our various departmental expenditures. Staff will go into more detail for each of these budgets in the upcoming slides. Of note, our CMP costs are 1.01 million and education costs are 1.01 million, which equal 20.3% of the total budgeted expenditures. And on the next slide, please. You will see that our mandatory expenditures that we pay to the province. For fiscal 2324, our mandatory expenditures have increased by 156,000, the majority of which is RCMP costs. And we will review in greater detail when we reach the other protective services budget. So as you can see, education, assessment, correctional, correctional services, housing, and RCMP costs are 2.133 million of our overall budget. And it's an increase of 156,300 or 7.9% of our overall operating budget. Next slide, please. So on this slide, we begin the departmental budget overviews with general government, which has a change of 31.7% or just over 245,000. Council honorariums are increasing by CPI of 7.5%, which is an $8,000 increase. The organizational review has been completed, and the additional position and wages related to those positions in this department have increased this budget by 135,000. Staff training, professional development, 14,000 has been included in the town operating, which previously was paid for from the utilities. Increase costs for town hall operation and maintenance of janitorial services, increase of 12,000, fuel increase of 9,000, and budget maintenance increase of 10,000. There is a legal increase of 15,000 this year, and it's required for various legal processes throughout the year relating to the town's operation. In 2022, council approved that low income tax exemptions would be increased yearly by CPI. So this year, they are increased by 7.5%. After a review, it was felt that the budgeted amount of 40,000 should cover this program, and that is the same as last year. This year, the income thresholds start at 32,250 and cap out at 43,000. The grants to organizations budget is increasing by 12,000. Council in September received a report from the Brighter Days Capital Campaign for the South Shore Regional Hospital fundraising. They had requested $100,000 from the Town of Lunenburg over a five-year period. CAO Doyle requested the information that was clarification from the organization as to why they had requested 100,000 from Town of Mahone Bay, 100,000 from the Town of Lunenburg, 200 from MODL. And the organization got back and said it was dependent upon the number of users in your community as well as the proximity to the South Shore Regional Hospital. We looked at the $200,000 donation that was made from MODL to the hospital foundation, used their per capita number, and did a multiplier in our per capita and are recommending 20,000 over five years. We feel that the services that are offered at that regional hospital are utilized by our community, but we also understand that we have a hospital in our community that we have to support. The presentation ask was for 100,000, and we are recommending the 20. The other item under the grants to organization is traffic control. In previous years, was funded by the town in the amount of $8,000. This was absorbed in the engineering and works budget. This year, we are segregating it into the grants to organization. Kayla is actually in the, or our municipal clerk, is in the process of developing a special events policy that she isn't going to be reviewing some standards around when and how traffic control will be paid for by the town. But these are the funds that are utilized for the Christmas tree lighting, the Christmas parade outdoor market, the Dock Fest, the Street Fest, and the Fisherman's Memorial. Those are the items that we have actually had to pay or pay our own staff or pay external services to actually look after the traffic control for any of those events. Next slide, please. Other protective services has a budget change, which is actually a minus 0.9%. The RCMP budget from the previous year was estimated on best information at the time from the Department of Justice. This year, we have received a confirmatory letter that the amount that will be paid from the Town of Lunenburg will be 1,7,500, which is 10.1% of the total budget. To date, the Town of Lunenburg has not been billed for any additional retroactive funding for the RCMP union settlement, except that which is built into the funding formula for our annual payment. Other units have actually had to pay additional. Fire budget, the increase, next slide, please, Trevor. The fire budget, the increase is 3.9% or 27,900. Heating fuel has increased by 11,000. Gas has increased by 4,300. And insurance has increased by 8,200. And I will now turn the presentation over to Tyson to review transportation services and the environmental health services sections on the budget.
Thank you, Kathleen. Good evening, everyone. I'm Tyson Joyce, the town engineer for Lunenburg. So as Kathleen said, moving on to transportation services, we have an overall increase of 19.2% or $223,800 in the upcoming budget. Next slide, please, Trevor. The highlights of the change are the fuel and the consumables costs, which have gone up across the board due to supply chain effects and market factors. It's $15,000, excuse me, $15,000. We have wages amongst staff and employees. So the wage increase is due to an additional 29-week laborer position, who is our facilities laborer. That's become a year-round position. We have the reallocation of administrative support staff, so that's gone from a different part of the budget to transportation services for the admin support that Public Works gets. And we also have some additional management costs. The parking and traffic study is $75,000 to provide funding for updated parking and traffic study. It incorporates the review of the active transportation plan and aspects of the CCP. And then we have the asphalt for paving, $30,000. So this is in line with our actual costs incurred for asphalt in the previous season, based on a lengthened season, and includes projections for increasing material costs that we would expect for this season. Next slide, please, Trevor. Our environmental health services budget. So overall, this is a 0% change and a net $0 amount. Next, sorry, so the highlights of the environmental health budget. Again, we have materials and supplies, costs increase of, we're budgeting for $15,000. We also have a decrease to lift station maintenance of $10,300. And this is in line with our 2223 actual costs. And we feel like we're in a stronger position with our lift stations. Chemicals, we have an increase of $8,000. And these are supply costs for the wastewater treatment polymer. And this has risen by about 15% over the last year. So, and the contract, the existing contract that we have is up for renewal in July this year. So we're just trying to protect some of the risk that we can foresee with that. I will now turn the presentation over to the director of community development, Arthur.
Thank you, Tyson. For the public record, my name is Arthur McDonald, and I'm the director of community development. I'm pleased to present council this evening with the community development budget. I refer you to pages 36 to 42 of the budget document. First of all, I'd like to point out that there is a percentage change of 61.5%, which works out to be $410,100. And the total community development budget is 1,076,400. Next slide, please, Trevor. Now, to break out the increases, the 61.5%, the first note is for wages and benefits of 124,900. This is for an additional full-time planner and a reallocation of support staff to carry out the implementation of the CCP as the CAO outlined earlier this evening. It also includes a block host hill planning study in the amount of $175,000. The funds have been included in the operating budget to provide funding for hiring of a consultant for the development of a residential concept proposal for the development of the lands in keeping with the town's comprehensive community plan. The next item includes an economic impact study of $50,000. At the January 24th to 2023 council meeting, staff proposed to undertake and release an RFP to engage a consultant to undertake economic impact study or analysis for the town. The cost is estimated to be 75,000. And staff proposes council contribute 50,000 to the project with an additional cost to be covered by grants. Under this section, there's also increases with regards to building repairs. This section of the budget contains any building that is considered to provide community development services to the community. These facilities include the old fire hall, the CN Station, Lunenburg Academy, and the visitor service center, which are the washrooms on Blue Nose Drive. Next slide, please. Under the Recreation Heritage and Cultural Services section of the budget, there is a percentage change of 13.4%, which totals $114,900. And the total Community Development Recreation Heritage and Cultural Services budget is $969,500. Next slide, please. The percentage of the increases includes wages and benefits of $32,200. This includes an additional staff person for recreation. The Recreation Complex Master Plan includes $50,000. This plan will be undertaken this fiscal year, as well as a community-wide recreation master plan. The complex master plan will provide details on the type of uses, building infrastructure, lifecycle costs, operating costs, potential number of users, revenue streams, and a projected Class C cost estimate, as well as a priority implementation plan. This section also deals with increases with regards to fuel and heat in the community center of the amount of $8,600, as well as the arena in the amount of $6,800. And as we all know, heating and electrical costs continue to rise, unfortunately. At this time, I'd like to refer the presentation back to Kathleen to continue. Thank you very much.
Under the Fiscal Services budget, this includes our principal debt financing categories, our reserve transfers, and mandatory provincial education expenses. This budget has increased by 10.4%, which is just over 193,000. Detransfer tax reserve transfers has increased by 100,000. And education has increased by 10.9% or 98,800. Next slide, please. Slide 19 refers to sewer rates, which have increased by 7.5%. Residential rate for the 2324 fiscal year will be 691,200 or $48.22 per year. The commercial rate will increase from 61.44 cents to 66.05 cents per 100 of assessment. And the churches rate will increase from 377.64 cents to 405.96. This will continue to pay the operational costs while also providing for the sewer operating reserve and sewer debt reserve as we continue to plan to replace our wastewater treatment plant. And slide, the next slide, please. The final slide in this section is, shows the medial tax rate for the Town of Lunenburg residential rate. So the proposed residential resource tax rate for the upcoming year is $1.376 per 100 of assessment. And the proposed commercial tax rate is $3.358 per 100 of assessment. The 2023 median tax rate or taxable residential assessment is 232,500. And with the current rate would increase the tax rate from 2,2896.48 cents to 3,199.2 cents, which is an annual increase of $302.72.
Okay, so that you're finished the operating budget? So that is the presentation for item 7.1. I will open the floor if councillors have comments or questions. Before I do, though, I would like to avail myself of the chair to say that I'm very pleased with this budget and echo the CAO's comments with respect to staff. I think this budget is, represents a long overdue need to modernize our corporate organization and regulatory frameworks, and I'm thrilled about that. I'll open the floor for councillors with questions. I was gonna say, this wouldn't be the first. Nobody had questions on the budget. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Richard. Now, through to Kathleen. You, I noticed you had $10,000 in there for elections. I know we accrue each year for the annual election every four years. Is that a little higher because are we anticipating the by-election this year?
It's because we're anticipating the by-election this year, and it's actually less than the last number of elections that we've held. I think when Kayla and I did the investigation into a full election, it was around 23,000. So we have a reserve rate now that currently stands, I believe, at about 35,000. So we'll be transferring that $10,000 back from the reserve to actually pay for the election this year.
Okay, any further questions? Councillor Alves?
I was shuffling my papers. The deputy mayor beat me for his questions. Through to Kathleen, I noticed in the presentation here, the debt, when we were breaking down the costs of some of the buildings that we had, it noted that the debt financing cost on the academy was separate from the table that was included. Do you have the debt financing costs on the academy?
I believe. If I don't have it in the package, I can certainly get it for you. I don't know. Let's have a look at the last page. So if you look at page 52, it doesn't specifically state, but you'll see on eight of 10, part of that borrowing is for the academy, and six of 10, part of that borrowing is for the academy.
You're gonna have to give me a second to try and catch up with where you're at, sorry.
I'm on page 52. It's almost at the very end.
You're in there at 52, okay. Adams, okay.
So the way that the debt is accounted for, the interest actually is shown in the individual building, but the debt is is captured as one line under the fiscal services charge. So when you look at the sheet that is shown there, you'll see every debt that we carry in the operating section, which is classified as operating debt, because we also have a section for water debt, and we have a section for electrical debt. You will see that there are various sections that actually carry what the academy is. So number four of 15 carries part of the academy. Number six of 10, there are two academy borrowings. But if you would like to know the amount, I can certainly email that to you. I have it in my notes when I do the calculations.
Yeah, I'd love to have that. It's tough, you know, we're breaking out this, you know, three or four different divisions, actually know where it is per year. Okay, yeah, I'd appreciate that number if you could get that some-
I will send it to council tomorrow.
Okay. Any further questions? Well, councillor Duggan and then councillor Ernst.
Kathleen, just looking at the the amount that we pay for public washrooms was listed at 26,800. Is that for one single bathroom facility? Just the one down?
The public washrooms, which are down on the waterfront. Yes, that is correct.
That's the only one that we operate at that cost. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Kathleen, just follow up to that because it's pertinent. Can you explain the $10,000 jump in that budget line? I assume it's for some repairs that are- Kathleen, just follow up to that because it's pertinent. Can you explain the ten thousand dollar jump in that budget line? I assume it's for some repairs that are necessary, but that's twenty-six is not our normal.
No, twenty-six is not our normal amount. And Tyson, I don't know if you can help me with that on what the repairs are.
Yeah, there's. There's some issues with the the windows in that building that. Public Works team would like to address. And some other exterior improvements that just haven't been addressed. In some time and. Need to, otherwise they'll get worse and cost us all more. So that's the approach we're taking with that.
We're all too familiar with that on town buildings, Tyson. Thank you. Councillor.
Uh, thank you. I don't have as much a question as much as I just want to say, uh, that is a a very thorough and well-done um. Uh, budget, and I certainly want to thank all of staff, but particularly to thank Kathleen, who really stepped forward this year. Due to our finance director's unfortunate ill health still being away with that. And certainly I want to, uh, on the record publicly, thank you for that.
Thank you.
You're here, councillor Halverson.
Uh, something else that I suspect will be addressed in the upcoming financial outlook meeting. But I'm wondering if you could explain a little bit about what are, uh, when we talk about the municipal borrowing limit. Uh, where are we right now?
So currently.
And and also just how it's perhaps how it's calculated, people don't understand that as well.
So currently we stand at seven point eight percent and we are holding an amount open for when we have to borrow for the wastewater treatment plant, which we are anticipating. Probably will take us to between twelve and thirteen percent, depending upon. What the prices come in at, because as we know, everything is escalating as we work through the processes. The the limit that we are allowed to establish, which excludes electric and water. Is fifteen percent. That is what the province say that you are allowed to borrow of your own source revenue. So there is a formula that you have to utilize that you calculate your own source revenue divided into your expenditures, and that's a lot how much you are allowed to borrow. So.
Just to be clear, so the source revenue, we're talking about property taxes, uh, uh, de-transfer type.
Yes.
Any any way the town actually takes money in.
Yes.
And fines and everything else. Okay.
Good. Any further questions? I've got a list. Um. Uh, the first one, Kathleen, is is just the deep transfer and meter revenues assumptions are are increased. Uh, from previous years, and I'm just wondering, I know you guys like to be conservative and take an average. Has the average caught up?
I have a a paper that I developed on this because I thought that might be a question that we actually had. We were developing it when we started to develop it and taking our our amount that we were charging from one percent to one point five, we were using a five-year average. But the five-year average, when you look at the three-year average, is very much skewed. So this year we've used a three uh three-year average and we've increased it to what we feel will reflect. The amount that um. We will receive in this current fiscal year.
Okay, perfect. Um, the next one is, uh, there was a sizable jump in the town grant to the community center and the arena. I'm okay with that. I just wonder if you wanted to speak to that.
I am not prepared for that question, but I can certainly, I I didn't look at that. I reviewed it and um. It's because we have. More expenses for that operation than we had previously, so that of course has increased the amount that we have to pay through our tax rate. But I don't remember the percentages exactly.
Don't worry. Um, that's perfectly reasonable explanation. Um, one thing that was more common of a question relates to transportation services. Um, I I understand labor's up and I understand Public Works has been doing a a good job of. Doing a lot of very tangible work over the past months. But there's a couple of line items where we're underspending there and. I'd like to see those come up if we can, particularly sidewalks, crack ceiling, that kind of stuff, like we're paying more for labor, but we're still. Underspending and have been a couple of years what we're budgeting for those line items. So I'm just wondering if Tyson, you can speak to that.
Uh, I think last year, if I'm remembering correctly, uh. Our our sidewalk spending was down in terms of the concrete that we purchased. But we we overspent on asphalt. Uh, so those two items kind of balance themselves out. Uh, that was, that was kind of a combination of things like. The weather we were still having in December allowed us to do that. And we saw sort of a a more immediate need uh with the upcoming weather through winter and the condition of the roads. And there was, there was a lot of infrastructure that just needed that attention. So. Um, you're right in in observing that the sidewalk spending was down, but. Overall, across those two, I think, think we balanced it well.
No, that's that's fine. I mean, you don't have to convince me. I know there's millions of dollars worth of infrastructure that needs. Attention and I'm sure the meeting on the sixteenth will reflect that, but. We'd been spending, I think fifty thousand, we had budgeted for sidewalks and averaging six seventeen. The last couple of years, so I just, you know, there's good work there, but I'd like to see that. That up and I don't know, you know, if labor is an issue, because I know there is quite a backlog that you guys are. Wrestling with now that you're fully staffed and fully engineered and, you know, geared up and everything that, uh. You know, I I don't know if we're looking at contracting out more stuff to be able to spend those. Uh, to be able to to accommodate those spends or I want the CAO to speak to that.
Through the Chair of the Mayor, um, your your comment about the spend certainly is noted. Um, through our capital planning committee program. Um, we we meet and if if we need to contract out service to spend more money quickly or more quickly, then we will certainly do that. However, that's uh more of a. An ebb and flow conversation versus right to that. Thank you.
No problem. Uh, I know for the public's benefit, community development sees a big spike, but I'm I'm of the view that it was previously underfunded, so I'm okay with that. I did have a question, Arthur, with related uh with respect to the economic impact study, because. The motion that was previously passed by council said we wouldn't spend. That unless there were matching funds in the way of fifty thousand dollars from other sources. And I'm just wondering if those matching funds don't materialize. What's the plan for that fifty thousand?
As that is a standing motion of council, if we do make any changes to the motion, it will have to be referred back to council for. An amended version of that motion, obviously. Um. We are still looking at. Potential grants and we're looking at potential partners. Um. We're struggling to come up with. Uh, fifty percent of of the project. And that will be probably a decision that council uh further on in this year as to how how we wish to proceed with that item.
Perfect, thank you. Um, we all know that buildings continue to be a bugbear um and continue to be. A cost and and, you know, one of the things that's not frequently reflected. In buildings is the staff time allocated to buildings, which is uh a lot. Um, so I'm just wondering, you know, uh, one of the things now that I'm leaving office that. I wish I would have made more headway on um than we have is is the disposal of some of these. Buildings. So I just wondering if somebody can speak to uh where we're at. On that and and, you know, I know we've done the the Angus Walters house and now we've done the. Uh, we'll finish up the Old Newtown School, but some of these other buildings that do create a cost on our. On our budget lines, where are we at with with the legwork required to uh to dispose of them?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll I'll take the liberty to respond to that question. Um, one thing I've noticed, um, I I've said this before publicly, is the amount of complexity and time it takes uh to dispose of. Uh, some of town-owned property within town limits. It's. It's amazing what you can find uh on property when you start to look. So we are, we are making some progress, um, certainly with uh seventeen tener road and the annex, and even that had a. An extra complexity that we we didn't foresee that we got to deal with. Um, a lot of our properties have um. Items like caveats and easements that we have to deal with. Uh, it no stranger to you all, uh, certainly the CN building, there's lots of. If I can say land housekeeping to be done there. Uh, this building as well, we all know there's all kinds of um. Like it's money to be spent to fix this place, not to suggest that we're selling it, but it's still cost. Uh, the academy is another one. There's, you mentioned staff time, uh, Mr. Mayor. I can attest, I've spent an enormous amount of my time. Um. I guess, addressing some of those academy issues across the board, whether it's, I know, potential leases versus capital work being done there. So you are quite correct. We aren't moving as quickly as we would have liked, but at the same time, we really want to make sure that we do it well. So that it's if we dispose of something, it's clean and it's ready to be developed and not hindering somebody, whether it be a not-for-profit group or a private sale. With some homework to do. So still making progress, just not as quickly as we'd like.
No, no worries. Uh, in that same vein, the Recreation Master Plan, the the fifty K, I assume is just an initial. Fifty K for this year. I can't imagine that's going to take us through to the end of the project. I just want to clarify that.
Through the Chair of the Mayor, you're you're very right. Um, as you, as you mentioned, there's a large spike, particularly in. Community development for studies um to be to be conducted. Uh, the Recreation Master Plan is, is no stranger to that. That is probably and arguably one of the biggest studies we'd have to do. Uh, that will take multi-year to complete it. The fifty thousand is merely to start the RFP process, probably in quarter three or quarter four of this year.
Okay, thanks. And I'm fine with those costs because planning saves you money in the long run. Um, rather than not, the only thing that'll cost you more money than planning is not planning. Um, there's uh just one thing with the UNESCO monument, there's a a budget item for. An electrical hookup and just to caution the staff that every time we've done an outdoor electrical hookup, we've created a garish eyesore and I. Hope that we plan the next one better than we planned the previous ones. Um, that's not anybody around this table, but just mindful. Um, fine, uh, to finally, um, so the borrowing, the wastewater treatment plant for in Kathleen. Um, just, I assume that would be done this year in the fall. And I'm just wondering what that would, what implications that would have for the tax. I'll ask the deputy mayor's favorite question, which is. What implication would that have for the tax rate for next year?
It will not be done this year because you're not allowed to borrow until a project is actually finished. So we have to do interim borrowing or. Borrow from ourselves and it will be borrowed probably, Tyson, we will be done that project in two years.
Yeah, two to three years, I would say.
Okay, so we're just waiting on that for a future budget year, and that's why the the debt servicing costs aren't reflected.
That's correct.
Okay. And the only other thing right now that I had was that Kathleen, I'm wondering if you can speak to the, and it's not a question, but just the increase in operating reserves since the beginning of the term. Uh, because I think that's a a good thing that we've done that I didn't want to go unhighlighted.
Probably about three years ago, council directed staff to start trying to ensure that we had more money in the bank and that we had rainy day funds. And that is a direction that council have been very passionate and staff have been very passionate about building our reserves. You will see that we have taken um the majority of the funds that have been collected from the deed transfer tax in the amount of. Uh, one percent every year goes into a capital reserve that is used. For our infrastructure in the town, be it a. A new road or if it's a new um sewer line, that those funds have been very beneficial to ensuring that we can look after our. Inventory of assets that we have that really require that type of those type of funds. We have also been working on trying to reestablish just a general operating surplus and um. What we do every year after the uh financial reports for the end of the year have been approved, if there's any residual funds, normally we put that in our general. Operating reserve. So if council need it for a special project or if we have a special emergency that comes up. That we actually have the funds to fund that ourselves and. We have also been very active in pursuing grants so that we ensure that if we can get something that costs us. A hundred percent, but seventy-five percent of that is funded from another source. We're only spending twenty-five dollars of our own money. So yes, there have been some active changes that have been initiated by this council. To ensure that we are actually building reserves so that we have those funds and we properly manage our way through. Um, any fiscal challenges that we have. We all know that we have an in um an investment. That we are going to have to make in all of our infrastructure and it it. It will take a while for us to actually come up with a viable capital plan where we can manage our way in planning. To get to a point that it's not such a great deficit.
Thank you, Kathleen. Any further questions of council? Councillor Burt?
I just have one quick one and it has to do with the cemetery. It's just looking at the mowing contract and it looks like it's increased fourteen thousand dollars. Just curious why.
So it didn't increase fourteen thousand because you had actually done an approval post-budget last year to take the budget back up to twenty thousand, I believe. So and when we did our tender this year, it came in at twenty-six, I believe. So we reduced another area of the budget to ensure that we can um maintain. How cemetery looks in the summer months.
Okay, councillor Hoverson.
I know about this a couple of times, but I'll ask uh to our CEO again, uh, this this uh this pending RCMP union costs, we don't know what that's going to be. Uh, what communication have you had with NSFM or uh? I guess any authority who can give us any indication on when we're going to hear what we're going to owe in that back pay.
Through the Chair to councillor Halverson, I'll first start with the communication, um, and then of course I'll turn to Kathleen, she in case she's had um. Subsequent conversations with their accounting professionals. The communication through NSFM or any other governing body that represents municipalities to the federal government that has almost fallen on deaf ears, to be honest, so it. As unfortunate as that is, and. I feel like this issue's followed me from Alberta because it's all across the country. Where it's being downloaded to municipalities and I do believe. The the cost has been downloaded, but I don't remember the cost for us off the top of my head. I want to say nine thousand, Kathleen, if I'm right. I could have been pulling out of the air somewhere, but maybe I'll ask Kathleen to confirm it. Nine.
Sorry, Kathleen, can you use your mic?
I haven't received an email that's indicated that. What they explained to us when we were chatting with them is that. Any retro that has been billed to a unit that is not under a private force. The retro was actually being paid in the annual billings. That's what they indicated to us on our last call. So. They also indicated that they were not aware. Of whether they were going to be passing any retro onto any unit. That is under the type of category of policing contract that we have with the RCMP in Nova Scotia. So Jamie, it's is that?
Yes, I I'm throwing through emails here that's happened. I was on vacation, so you're quite accurate. Um, well, stay tuned.
So I just want to be clear, so it looks like we may not have to pay the back pay. Fingers crossed.
Kathleen, your your mic again.
They, for this year, they haven't really said. Confirmatory one way or the other, if we will. They were leaning towards the no for this year, but they haven't solve solidified anything.
I guess it's the, it's the, the not knowing is the worst part because whether it's this year or next year, somewhere down the line, that's. That's going to be a large nut to crack if if it does get downloaded to our municipality.
I'd have to share your sentiment, um, but I guess the solace is we're also not alone. Uh, so it's. I'm hopeful that uh folks like NSFM can help us um. Lobby in a way that we can't to certainly help us um. Be relieved of those potential payments.
Okay. Any further questions? Seeing that. Oh, how, I should have known.
Jeez. I did have one last one. Um, this is just a little quick stinger. I I noticed we have the the parking and and uh. Parking study. I noticed the accessible sidewalk study has been uh put off for a year. I'm just wondering, does it make sense to tie that into the? Parking and sidewalk study, or is that something we can stand on its own? I'm not sure who I'd direct that to.
Thank you for the question, councillor House, and I'll I'll respond to that. Internally, we went back and forth on whether or not it should be included. Um, the accessibility standards and and what that looks like, I think is big enough to stand on its own. Um, and parking could certainly be uh also. Tied in with um accessibility measures that we could take. So. I think it's too big to put them both together, but to break them up into smaller ones might be a bit more palatable for our members.
I guess I just have a little concern if. As you talk about. Parking and accessibility kind of do go hand in hand. I just think about, you know, some point up to a sidewalk having a bump out versus, you know, being able to wheel up onto a a. Uh, you know, a secured route, a secured walkway. Uh, I'm just curious about or just concerned about putting that to a a different year when we're already undertaking the parking study. I just feel like that might have been something we probably should. Run concurrently, even though they are two separate projects.
Thanks again for the question, councillor Halverson. I don't. I'm not suggesting concurrently could happen. Um, however, the parking study may also illustrate better ways of doing it. Um, I think when you think about accessibility standards throughout town of Lunenburg. Um, it's almost unsurmountable as it is um to try to retrofit. So. I think we have to take it with caution to make sure that we do it appropriately and cost effectively. One thing that will that I noted. One thing that will, that I noted uh, with the output of work from this organization um this year is certainly monumental, but we are running out of capacity. So when we start to think about um, what we're able to push out the door as well as manage or do in-house, we try to prioritize that in ways that um alarmed the CCP as well, and not to say that accessibility doesn't, but we're trying to get through some of the backlog of the planning things first. Thank you.
Councilor Sanford.
The accessibility question just uh, cued me with the street lighting. Um, so I'm wondering if the budget line item here for street lighting at a hundred and thirty-five thousand, does that take into account the requirements that we were to meet by, I almost think it was the end of twenty twenty-two for changing our lighting over. Our lighting project is complete. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions, Council? Seeing none. There is a draft motion provided for item seven point one. Is it anybody's pleasure to move that recommendation to the next council meeting? Moved by Councilor Sanford, seconded by the Deputy Mayor. Is there any discussion or debate? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed. Motion is carried and I congratulate staff and thank them for their hard work. Now on to the water utility budget.
Next slide, Trevor, please. So the total projected revenue for the water utility for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year is one point seven million. And with the balanced expenditures of one point seven million. The change percentage change is eight point four percent with an increase of one hundred and thirty-two thousand nine hundred. The town of Lunenburg applied for the rate increase in twenty twenty-three. The above revenues reflect reflect the new rate as approved by the Nova Scotia Utility and Review Board. The quarterly amount for the water billing will increase from one hundred and forty-nine fifteen to a hundred and sixty-four oh six. A sixty dollar a year increase. And then next slide, please, Trevor. And I'll pass it back to Tyson.
Thank you again, Kathleen. So just to take you through some highlights of the water utility budget. Again, we have wage increases. So again, that covers management fees and also our replacement operator that was recently uh, advertisement was closed. We've been running short on that team since the new year when when the opera, our fourth operator left. Uh, we have chemicals of twenty-five thousand dollars. So the supply cost for water treatment chemicals have risen by over twenty percent over the last two years. So this budget, we're we're trying to catch up with that and make sure we have the costs to cover that risk. Uh, we have fuel and consumables, seven thousand dollars. And materials costs, uh, materials for water supply have gone up significantly over the last year as well. Uh, we have the membrane reserve, which was missing from the previous year's budget, but that's back in place for the twenty-three, twenty-four operating budget. Uh, we have the dividend transfer of forty thousand dollars. And the dividend forms part of the approval received from the U A R B and is in line with utilities around the province. Uh, in terms of credits, we have the water rate study, which was completed in the twenty-two, twenty-three season. Uh, we have legal fees which have been consolidated in another section of the budget. And then we have the materials for the stand pipe, which is a a potential improvement that we'll look at adopting in the capital budget for twenty-four, twenty-five rather than using it in the operating budget. That concludes the highlights. I'll pass it back to you, Kathleen.
Good. Any questions on the water utility budget? Deputy Mayor?
No, thanks, Your Worship. Just looking in here, like, I mean, I think uh, water metering is going to be imminent in our future. And I'm just thinking, are we you know, taking any measures now to reserve for that transfer or over because that's going to be a very expensive thing like so when we did our when we did our rate review just recently, is there been anything implemented in that to uh, to cover some of these costs moving forward as opposed to, you know, all in one fair swoop?
So if memory serves me correctly, we will be paying for the the water meters from our water depreciation or reserve, which is very healthy. And every year when you actually purchase something like that, you, it is determined by the Utility and Review Board what percentage you actually have to put back into the reserve. So you are always funding the reserve. I think that our reserve transfer this year is something like two hundred, it's over two hundred thousand that we have to reestablish every year based on the equipment that we have purchased or any type of infrastructure that's in the water utility.
Okay, any further questions, Councilor Alves?
Uh, I'm looking at the land uh, transfers as well. Uh, I don't see, maybe I missed it somewhere, but we have a total somewhere of where we are in the land reserves. I know we spent that money when we were first elected to protect that area around the the water uh, supply, but where are we at now?
So I can certainly supply you with that information. That is something that we normally discuss when we are in the capital section of the budget because that is a capital expenditure. But if you would like me to, uh, can have a look at that tomorrow and see where we actually stand with the land reserve or any of the reserves that are in the water utility, if you would like to have them.
I'd like to have whatever you can provide. Yeah, thanks, Kathleen.
And just for everybody, including the publics. Uh, just a reminder that we did pass the capital budgets for the general opera, uh, the general capital budget and the water utility capital budget back in uh, December. So we're all having memory issues because they're usually uh, side by side. But this year we got capital done very early to get a jumpstart on projects and good pricing and all that kind of thing, which we were very pleased about. Any further questions, Council? All right, I have two. Actually, I only have one. Um, and it's not related to this. Uh, because the Deputy Mayor spoke with the watering metering project that's supposed to come into effect in twenty twenty-five. As the budget year, if I'm not mistaken, twenty-five, twenty-six.
It is over the next three years that we are actually going to be doing the water meter rollout. So it starts in this year, which I believe will probably be our fact-finding year with an RFP to figure out which we're, what we're going to buy.
All right. And other than that, uh, after tonight, the only uh, budgets or after the council meeting in which these budgets are ratified. The only budgets we have left are the electric utility operating and capital budgets. And I'm just looking to staff for a uh, sense of when those will be being brought forward.
Thank you for the question, Miss Mayor. Very good one, because he's notably absent. Um, as mentioned, uh, by Councilor Ernst, our finance director who's been out ill is is quite the oracle when it comes to our electric utility. Um, we don't I don't want to move forward in haste to get it done without Lisa being present and helping us. And once we have a better understanding of her return, we'll have a better understanding of that budget coming forward. Thank you.
And just a follow-up to that, how do you think that'll affect capital spending and rates of capital spending and that kind of?
Through the Chair of the Mayor, I I don't expect it to. Um, also understand that it it's not um in perpetuity, uh, once we have a better understanding of of Lisa's return, then we'll schedule accordingly. If we can't, we will schedule just in her absence.
Okay. Any further questions, Council? Seeing none. There is a draft motion for item seven point two. Is it anybody's pleasure to move the water utility operating budget as presented, moved by Councilor, seconded by Councilor Dugan? Is there any discussion or debate? All right, seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed. The motion is carried and there being no further business, I declare the meeting adjourned.